So it is now six twenty-nine and we have a lineup of meetings before the public hearing. So I wanted to jump in. The first meeting of this evening is a regular meeting of the Board of Finance. For the record, today is Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. We are in the City Hall Auditorium. And participating this evening are Board of Finance member Deb Iannacito, Christopher Bass. By Zoom, we have Board of Finance member Mark Bushka and Board of Finance member Christopher Anderson. Oh, there he is. I was gonna say, I know that I saw Board of Finance member Jim Wright in the room. So we have a quorum of the Board of Finance. Here comes Lorraine Pesky as well. Before we go into the meeting agenda, could we please stand and touch the flag? Okay, because these meetings all happen consecutively. Let's jump into this agenda item for the Board of Finance. It should be a fairly short meeting. So item number one, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for public comment. Mr. Bass, and I heard a second from Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? We are over to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the Board of Finance at this time? This is just the Board of Finance. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into item two. And I'm gonna take this in for separate motions to A, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Oh, was that Mr. Bushka? I'm sorry.
No.
All right, that was Mr. Anderson then. So motion made by Mr. Anderson, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Iannacito. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention, Mayor.
And an abstention for the record is Mr. Bass. Item two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Second.
I heard Ms. Pesky. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint Board of Finance and Board of Education meeting. Thank you, Mr. Bushka.
Second.
And I heard Mr. Bass. Questions or comments on these minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes from April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
I heard Mr. Bass first. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, this is just a discussion, doesn't require any motion unless the board decides they need a motion and they can add it by two-thirds. But the three A is just a quick update on the audit. And I'm gonna turn this over to the City Councilor, Robin Stansier.
So we are finalizing one last item in the audit. And as soon as I can get that over to the auditors, there will be a two- to three-week review process. Obviously, this wasn't an ideal year. We have lost about eighty years of institutional knowledge over the last year, year and a half with Alice, our former comptroller retiring, our accounts payable person retiring, and then Gina, our deputy comptroller retiring. All that was all within six months. And then in February, one of our deputy treasurer moved to WPCA. So we have had some struggles, but throughout this entire time, even since January, we had departmental meetings. We've been discussing with the mayor and HR how to move forward into the next audit, into the next fiscal year to utilize the resources that we have and to build on them. So we're in the process of doing that in hopes of having a normal audit in this next fiscal year. You know, not only has the city gone through these transitions, but I know the Board of Ed has also gone through the same issues too with new staff. And it does pose, it does pose some challenges. So I know we're all working through that and we hope to be strengthening and in a better position for next time.
Thank you. Any questions on the audit? I know in the next meeting, we do have some business to address with regard to the additional expenses because of like the time and the amount of work that had to occur. If there are no questions with regard to the update, I'll move into item two, three B. Update on the budget performance. I believe budget performance reports have gone out. You know, we're closing in on the last eight weeks of the year. I think those budget performance reports go to the end of April. So just, you know, an opportunity to take stock of where we are and how we'll end the year. Budget performance reports also included a request that was made during the Board of Education, Board of Finance joint meeting for a two-year look back on what was requested, what was adapted, what was expended, and where surpluses and deficits occurred and how the year ended. Those documents also went out to the board. And if there are any questions or comments with regard to those, we can certainly take them under advisement and direct them to the Board of Ed. Questions? Or comments? All right, then move into item number four. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Second.
And second by Mr. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, we got a room full of department heads and I'm not sure if everybody came ready to talk to the Board of Finance. But Dan, is there anything from the Treasurer's office?
The only thing, we've recovered some of those funds that I applied for. So they sent us two checks, we're waiting.
Excellent. Any questions for Dan? Robin, anything else from the Comptroller's office? No, no. Kim, anything that you can think of that? Thank you. All right. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Second by Mr. Anderson. Questions or comments? Or excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, from the screen, anything this evening, Mr. Anderson, requests for additional information or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bushka.
Yeah, I just wanna confirm the schedule of meetings going forward in regards to the budget and the mill rate.
Yes. So after this evening's lineup of events, the Board of Finance will have, I think, all of the spending plans, the Board of Education spending plan, the city spending plan. We will not meet again until June sixth. Next week, obviously, is a short week with the holiday. June sixth is the week that the state wraps up its legislative session. They actually end on the seventh. I'm hoping they have a budget adopted by the sixth. If not, we may have to ask for a two-day delay and go for June eighth. So this evening and then the next meeting for the Board of Finance will be the sixth or the eighth.
That will be to set the mill rate on that date?
That is correct, yes.
Would it make sense to just schedule it for the eighth?
We could do that. I don't know, I'm looking at the sitting clerk when I say that. It is a Thursday, five o'clock on a Thursday. We could do that. Does the Board of Finance?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Want to check here?
I prefer to keep it to six, if possible.
Yes.
But I'm only one person, so.
All right.
Do we have any indication from Hartford about whether or not they'll actually wrap up on time this year?
Yes, well, I had a brief conversation with Representative Cook and she did believe that they would be able to settle their budget before the legislative session ended.
I think any additional time to review budgets is good. So I do, I am inclined to move that meeting to the eighth, if that's a possibility.
Is that? Okay.
So I'll make a motion if we need to, but.
I have a motion to.
What, what time would it be?
Five. Five. That's a Thursday.
We could certainly be flexible on that. Five thirty?
May, I may have some little people coming with me.
We'll get to see all the fun, right?
That's certainly understandable. We have time, we could do the census. I have a motion on the floor, I should call for the second, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So I have a motion and a second to schedule the mill rate, budget adaption and mill rate setting for June eighth. Any questions or comments? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we'll work out the time that works best for everybody after that. All right, that was Mr. Bushka, I believe, that asked, anything else this evening, Mr. Bushka?
Yes. Either at that meeting or sometime before it, if Robin could get us a estimated budget surplus, hopefully, for the current fiscal year.
Yes.
I can do that. Yeah, okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Iannacito, anything this evening? Pesky?
This was going to be OPEB. Isn't it usually November and May?
Yes.
So will we do it at another time?
Yeah, I was able to reach out to to fiduciary and Hooker and Holcomb to get them to both come in possibly the first week of September
Oh, okay.
to present everything at the same time.
Maybe we should switch time of year when we, or is that something that's set?
We usually do the valuation in November, but that's every other year. And then OPEB, I don't know, I haven't been here long enough to know if OPEB's at the same time or not.
The, I know May is such a tough month because we are from the middle of April to the first week of June, it's all budgets. And, you know, all of the boards are busy. We could, we could look into changing our policy on that. You know, if September and March make better sense. And we could certainly speak with Hooker, Holcomb and Tony Tringizi.
Fiduciary, yeah. But right now, they were able to, they are available though, when, first Wednesday in September. So we'll work on getting that scheduled.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Do you think we should have a, I was gonna ask, same thing Mr. Bushka asked, was a performance report detailing the city surplus as we asked the Board of Ed to do. Is it, do you think it's worth to have another joint meeting with the Board of Education to review that? Or should we do that in our budget adoption meeting? So our next meeting?
To discuss a performance report on budget surpluses?
Yeah.
City and Board of Ed?
City and Board of Ed. Do you think we can just add that to the agenda before we do the mill rate? Or should we have a separate special meeting?
Not sure how long that would take, you know, what the, what, how long that conversation would be. I know that the mill rate setting and budget adaption is kind of a stress-inducing meeting. We certainly have two weeks that we could squeeze in another meeting if that, if the board wanted to. I don't know, I'm sort of throwing the question out to the board.
It depends if we want to solicit feedback. Because obviously, if they're not, if it's not a joint meeting, they don't have that feedback opportunity.
Right.
And neither do we on the city side, so.
We can always ask or invite them and then decide later.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so much in the way, the request for the Board of Education's last two years.
Yeah.
Which was all sent out to the Board of Finance last week. We could do the same thing with the city side. And then once you have those documents, you could decide if you think it warrants a meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Makes sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anything else?
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
No, not today.
All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard a motion from Mr. Bass and Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned and we now go into the next meeting on our lineup, which is a joint meeting. So for the record, this is a special joint meeting between the City Council and the Board of Finance. Today is Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. It is now six forty-six PM. Participating this evening here in the auditorium in person, I have Board of Finance members Deb Iannacito, Lorraine Pesky, Chris Bass, James Wright, participating via Zoom. I have Mark Bushka and Christopher Anderson representing the council this evening. In chambers, I have Councilman Oliver, Councilman Cavanero, Councilman Menicia, Councilwoman Hona. And participating via Zoom, I see Councilman Waldron. I'm not sure if Councilwoman Riwett made it on, she wasn't sure that she would. All right, so we have a quorum of both boards and I'd like to jump right into this evening's meeting, joint meeting. Item number one on the agenda this evening. And each one of these will require a vote, motion and vote by each board. The first is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement called Tax Collector Services Agreement and to act on behalf of the city regarding its execution and administration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
And second.
This is a vote by council?
Oh, sorry.
It's just a city council and I didn't say that, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So motion made by Councilman Menicia, seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All right. I know that Corporation Council is on the line. And we have representatives from the Tax Collector's Office and TTC LLC in the room. Are there any questions or comments on the contract that you have before you? Seeing and hearing none. I'll call the motion for the council vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll look for the Board of Finance. Same motion, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement Tax Collector Services and act on behalf of the city regarding its execution and administration.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. I heard Mr. Anderson, questions or comments from this board?
I read through it briefly, it looks like the same agreement as prior, there was no changes.
Yes.
modifications or?
I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
There are a few changes, there is, there were collaboration between, obviously, the mayor's office, myself, Mario Capolo representing the TTC LLC. And we've reached a few minor changes to, oh, the assessor was involved in the course of the discussions as well. So it was a very pleasant negotiations of all parties. The main issue, not the main issue, but one of the important issues that the Board of Finance and the City Council should know about is there's no change in the compensation that the city pays to TTC LLC. There were, there is some greater input and greater cooperation between the tax collector herself and the assessor's office where they can collaborate a little bit more closely over various personal property assessments and real estate property assessments. But there are not a lot of major changes to the agreement and I don't think anybody's gonna see a difference. Things work smoothly between the assessor and the tax collector currently and I don't expect that to change as we go along. So unless there's other questions, I think, I'm not sure if Mr. Capolo's on, but I think that we're happy, yeah, there's Mario. We're happy, I'm happy with it and I don't know about Mario, if you have anything you want to add to that? But he's muted.
Okay.
You're muted, Mario. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vic, yeah, monetary changes were the things that were concerned about, so if there's no monetary changes.
Yes. All right, other questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vic. All right, item number three, now that we have a contract with TTC LLC, item number three. And again, this goes back to the council for approval. I'm looking for a motion and second to reappoint a tax collector obliged to fulfill and, they, excuse me, contractual obligations of the Tax Collector Services Agreement. This doesn't name the tax collector, but it's Lana Gosley that we're looking to appoint. So that motion would be to reappoint Lana Gosley as a tax collector.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, Councilman Oliver, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And to the Board of Finance, same motion to reappoint Lana Gosley as tax collector obliged to fulfill the contractual obligations of the Tax Collector Services Agreement.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Anderson, I heard Ms. Pesky. Questions or comments?
Welcome back, Lana.
All right, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, still in the line of businesses that both boards must act on. To the City Council, I will entertain a motion to approve an additional fiscal year 2022 audit expense totaling twenty thousand dollars due to Clifton Larson Allen LLP, that's CLA of West Hartford, to be paid from contingency as further explained in a letter from CLA dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. To the Board of Finance, I'm seeking a motion to authorize the use of twenty thousand dollars to cover the additional auditor's expenses due to CLA Allen LLP of West Hartford for the fiscal year 2022 audit. This will be paid from contingency as further explained in a letter dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard Mr. Wright and I heard Mr. Anderson. Are there questions?
I think we're at, we haven't utilized any contingency funds this fiscal year, have we? The latest budget performance shows that we haven't, so just double checking.
There was a payment out to
It was like eight hundred and thirty, or two hundred and thirty-nine dollars to try to use service PRs.
Yeah.
So essentially contingency has been untapped. Other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Was there any stipulation in the engagement letter from the accounting firm how this would be handled? Additional time outside the scope of the audit?
It is. It is. It's, that's usually in there, yes.
It's very common that they'd add a paragraph saying additional time.
Sure.
And just knowing how monumental these single audits are, I mean, it makes sense to invest that money into the training of our, of our new faces to make sure everybody understands what we're working on.
Yes, agreed.
I've heard enough from the two accountants.
Other questions? Did that answer your question, Mr. Bushka?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Are there other questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, back to the City Council, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Clifton Larson Allen of West Hartford CT as the city auditor for fiscal year 2023. So this is the second extension on a three-year contract. So this is another one-year extension.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Second.
And second by Ms. Hona. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And back to the Board of Finance, the same motion to appoint CLA LLP of West Hartford to serve as the city auditor for the fiscal year 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Pesky and Mr. Bushka. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Will the, the contract for the coming year will not include the additional twenty thousand that was spent last year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
So we're probably expecting Robin to not have to expend that extra twenty thousand dollars next year. Yeah. Just because the turnover in the department will be hopefully caught up by then.
It's a rebuilding year, strengthening the financial departments.
I'm sure she was taking notes.
Yes, copious notes. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Into the big reason for this evening's meeting. This does not require a motion. We can start the review of the proposed city budget for fiscal period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is really not a review of the city budget as much as it is a review of the department head requests that have been presented. I do want to again express my gratitude to those members of the budget subcommittee that spent a number of weeks meeting with department heads going over these. We had two representatives on the Board of Finance, Mr. Bass and Ms. Pesky. Two members from the City Council, Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Menicia, and two members from the Board of Safety, Mr. Cogswell and Mr. Benedetto. Did a deep dive into all of the detailed requests and I do want to express my gratitude to those board members as well as the department heads and to both Robin and Kim who also attended those meetings when it got dark at four o'clock in the afternoon and it was cold when we left the building. when it got dark at four o'clock in the afternoon, and it was cold when we left the building. So with that said, I want to turn this over to Robin. We're looking at this high level of by sector, the budget requests, budget impact, and what is driving those budget requests. So you're on, Rob?
Okay. So I know this is difficult to see up there, but I provided a few worksheets that can compare the fiscal year 23 budget to the 24 proposed budget. This is showing the change by classification. In total, our fiscal year 2023 budget was just for the city side, $61,815,350. And the level four proposed budget is $68,161,588. That is a $6,346,238 change, a 10.27% increase. So looking at this worksheet, the items that have impacted this increase are the following. So under general government, under capital outlay, there was an increase of $630,700. And the majority of that is from Department Five under city real estate, and that includes the increase for the five-year capital plan. Those numbers you'll you'll see also in public, under Public Works in Department 31, that is also the increase of $748,000. And that, those numbers are there, they are not back to 100% of what they were in 2018, but that is getting us closer to where we were at that time before those line items were cut. Then you will see under health, the $736,000 increase under operating, Department 35. So that includes a $350,000 increase in dispatch and a $200,000 a new line item for, under EMS for the new ambulance, and $170,000 increase under refuse and recycle. Then under the financial summary, the under payroll, the million-dollar increase is in Department 44. That is an estimated contractual obligation increase along with health insurance and pension, a change in the pension. There was actually a little savings in pension with the new valuation. And then under operating, we had a $1.7 million increase for the debt service under principal and interest. And with that 1.7, we have the opportunity to utilize our our premium to cover the interest expense. So we have about $1.4 million able to cover that increase. So at the bottom, you'll see the summary by payroll, capital outlay, and operating. And 31% is due to payroll changes, 21% is the capital outlay increase, and 47% is the operating change. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Robin, the 1.7 on the debt service, you said 1.4. Is that taken off already?
That will be on the revenue side as a transfer in. So 500,000 was due to the fiscal year, or the bond we bonded in 2022. That's the principle for that 500,000 other payment. And then we have 1.4 on the interest side.
What is the 350K in dispatch? Is that an increase to LCD?
That would be an increase to LCD, and that is a combination of price escalation and additional expenses related to the police department's implementation of a new CAT RMS. What is it? Yeah. Next gen, thank you.
Yeah. I don't remember it all being bunched in dispatch before, that's why.
We've been fortunate over the last two or three years with dispatch. Those cost escalations have exceeded the amounts that land in the budget ultimately. I think Deputy Chief Trip has been instrumental in helping negotiate some of those, smoothing out some of those increases. But this year in particular, because of the transfer of this platform, it will require additional resources. I know that the police department has been working and trying to find other ways to cut those costs. But as it stands right now, if we want to implement that new system in fiscal year 2024, this will be the additional expense.
And that CAT upgrade is being paid out of ARPA?
The, yes, next gen, yes, yes. But these additional expenses are manpower, essentially. Some upgrades to their system, but essentially manpower.
Okay, yeah, so we can't utilize.
The ARPA money, no. It certainly wouldn't it wouldn't smooth out. Regardless, this expense has to be built into the budget as an ongoing operating expense.
Well, that's what, yeah, I guess that's why it's clearing up whether it's, those are startup costs or continuously running.
Those will be continuously running costs.
Okay.
You know, this actually, in this particular line item, you'll see that that's total line item is well over $900,000, almost a million dollars. And it's certainly, at the time we ventured into the partnership for Litchfield County Dispatch, there were cost savings, but the longer that we get into this and the more things change with regard to the demands on dispatch services and other platforms, it certainly presents an opportunity for us to take a step back and look at, you know, is it still cost effective for us to continue to use Litchfield County Dispatch? Or would it be more cost effective to bring dispatch back in-house? And those are conversations that I think that you might be hearing more, certainly the Board of Safety would be hearing more of over the next year or two. Other questions for Robin?
Why are we increasing the contingency?
So contingency. So where we are with the, you heard Robin allude to those increases in the capital outlay, city real estate, Public Works. I don't need to remind this board the painful decisions that were made when the state didn't pass its budget until November, I think that was 2018. And every single capital line item and some of the operating expense line items were stripped from the city's budget, stripped to zero. And the plan back then was we will restore these 25% each year over the following four-year period of time. We found that the 25% was a little exorbitant. We were trying to be very careful on what we how we impacted the taxpayers. There were a couple of years, I think we only restored 12.5%. So that's why we are now in year five, and we are still not quite restored to those 2018 capital levels. Contingency was one of those. And I would, I will admit, you know, the decision this evening to expend $20,000 of the contingency line item still leaves a fair amount in that line item. But there have been years where we have needed all of that. Certainly, what do we know? We know that based on these numbers and the numbers that have been presented by the Board of Education, these are big, you know, and there's not enough revenue to offset these increases, and the impact of the taxpayers will be significant. Certainly this evening, I'm hoping that both boards can give Robin and me a little direction on where you want to land so that we could start working with the department heads to decide how do we get there, and contingency would certainly be a part of that discussion as well.
Yeah, 10% and $6 million is a lot of money. Especially when we don't have the revenue to cover it. So I think it's always, even in this meeting, we get an idea from the council of where, because their motion is to approve this spending plan as is or make amendments to it. So I think it's always wise for us as the Board of Finance to have some direction and thought from the council on on this as well, which will help factor into our final budget number decisions that'll come on the sixth or eighth, whenever we meet.
And, please, Ms. Pesky.
Just to clarify that 10% would be what of a mill increase? It's
Well, I think we talked about with the Board of Ed, it was like five or six mils.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If all revenues are level, you know, we know there'll be some movement in the revenues. But yes, as presented between the Board of Education and the city, it would be in excess of six-mill increase.
And the Budget Subcommittee voted a one to recommend that we go no higher than a one.
Right. Yeah, those result out of Budget Subcommittee.
So that's a big difference.
So I know we don't have
Six to one.
Yeah, and we don't have our big sheet now, as Chris Anderson refers to it, so you know, have a better idea once budgets passed. But, you know, that's, that's what we're staring down. If these budgets come from the council as where they're approved, that's where we stand at a six-mill increase, just so the council understands that. So like I said, I welcome input from the council on this process and where they'd like to see us end up or even just conversation about it.
It's just so challenging because even being in the Budget Subcommittee, nobody's asking for more than they need. Like there isn't, you'd think 10% feels like it's some exorbitant things that the different departments are asking for, but they're not. It's contractual obligations, it's catching up from a lot of cuts over the years. It's our debt. There's not a lot to cut. It's heartbreaking because it's, this is not, like you'd think 10% was like gonna fix all of our problems, and it's not. But I don't even know what it would look like to cut. I mean, like 80% of what we're talking about. But it's a revenue problem. I mean, that's what we're looking at is 0.81% change in our property taxes for you know, our real estate is a challenge. You know, we can't rely on our car taxes to save us. And I've always said we can't like cut our way out of a hole, but I don't know what the answers are because we certainly can't have a six-mill increase either.
Um, Mayor, yeah, being on the Budget Subcommittee, the numbers were really high and, you know, realistically, we knew that, you know, even a mill for some people is going to be a lot. And I think the taxpayers are under a lot of pressure right now with, you know, grocery store bills and other bills that are increasing, and, you know, this could just put them over the edge, so.
But I do want to thank the department heads because it's really hard for them to come and listen so many times to us, but if we didn't know what you all wanted and needed. And it's not, and then the wants are not, when I use the term wants, it's not silly wants. It's wants that will make the city safer, that will make the city healthier. All those, those kinds of things, that, things that will maybe help us grow that grand list. And when you don't fund those things, we need to know, we, the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, you all, and from the Board of Ed, what does it really, what should it really cost? But what can we afford? And that's, that's two different.
In my opinion, you're speaking to, in some ways, the heart of the issue. Look, I agree with everybody here, this is not acceptable. It's not acceptable. But the failure, look, I'm sure these department heads are now presenting needs, not wants. I get that, you know, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to trim back needs, which is an ugly, ugly affair. As far, before I go on a little bit here, let me first address Mr. Bayes, what you're asking for is direction. My only piece of direction here, okay, to you, is I would not cut public safety, okay? I mean, it is the first priority of government, ensure the safety of its citizens, number one. And this request is modest, and it's extraordinarily reasonable. I would not look there, okay? Other things, unfortunately, in my opinion, are on the table regarding the failure here, the problem here, Mayor. And we're going to say things that are going to make you uncomfortable, but I've said them before. We have not grown, this government has not grown the grand list. And from my personal perspective, I transitioned from the Board of Education to the City Council in the hope, and the primary reason for doing that was to bring together the Board of Education and the City Council on a regular basis to discuss the interconnection of those two agencies, those two budgets throughout the year, not, not at this point in the discussion, throughout the year, so that people on the council can listen to and learn about what's happening in our schools. And people who run the school district can hear and listen how the rest of the city is being managed. And those things never happened. And I'm not blaming you specifically, and I'm not blaming the chairman of the Board of Education specifically, but somehow the two of you have not figured out a way to make this happen. So that conversation, I have no idea, quite frankly, and specifically, and I used to be the chairman of the Board of Education. I have absolutely no idea how to assess what's really going on in our schools because I don't know. I assume, well, you're a parent, you don't know. But I'm guessing most of the people in the City Council don't know exactly what the major issues are in those schools as it relates to budget, what their needs and what their wants are, and how we could do things more efficiently, more better, number one. So that failure results in, 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 so in our school continuing to be an aligned school district, which goes to my second point, which is that we are not doing the kinds of things to attract business. Attracting for-profit business means attracting businesses that will grow the grand list, you know? And I don't hear the kinds of things, I mean, I recommended, I was mocked, quite frankly, I believe, early on when I recommended strongly that our mayor work with mayors of the Western, of other Western Connecticut towns in the, you know, in the Rust Belt of Western Connecticut to form a political alliance to basically work with Hartford to get the kinds of things necessary a long generation ago. My father did this, okay? And I learned from him to do the kinds of things that are necessary infrastructure-wise in Connecticut that would allow old Rust Belt cities like Connecticut to be more competitive in bringing in business. A big part is lowering energy costs, okay? You, Mayor Carbon, are not going to do that yourself, I recognize that. But you, in conjunction with other cities, working together and pooling your political muscle in Hartford, could start that. It's a years-long process. It's not one. That's why years ago I was recommending this, okay? Bring down energy costs. Has to do with transportation infrastructure costs. It has to do with access to goods and services in Northwest Connecticut through hell ports, through bringing in talent, that, all these things, that there are models out there. I used to speak about North Carolina. People think that Torrington lost manufacturing to China. We did not. That's misinformation. We didn't lose manufacturing to China. We lost manufacturing to the South, to North Carolina, Florida, Texas, southern states that Dylan and I'm talking about doing, okay? In North Carolina, it's called the Golden Triangle. They leverage their assets with their educational institutions, forcing them to work collectively together on bids. That doesn't happen with just one mayor. I get that, Mayor. But it was in your control to get the ball rolling, to start those kinds of discussions with other mayors, okay? And bring them to the table. It's a long process, but here we are, eight years into your administration, and we're going to grand list at 1.7%, but our needs are going at 10.2%. And that, you know, that's just not acceptable. So so I cannot support this. I, my, my final word again to you or to the members of the finance, I would not touch public safety, look other places, and it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt a lot of people in this town, but that's where we are. This, this mill, this increase is not sustainable. Thank you.
Floor is still open to questions and comments.
The, the car tax. What is the amount that? Is it being allowed this year because? It's less than, than last year.
So, uh, no, no, I think it's still level.
Do you wanna, do you wanna go into the revenue, can we, can we move into the revenue part of this, because I, I'm curious, Councilman Penaro and.
Um, that question, um, why don't we go into the third page of this, and let's talk a little bit about. Where will we see the increase in revenues? And um, how will the. Very rough estimates, these are. Very, very rough estimates, I don't need to remind the Board of Finance that the um. State budgets um can change, and we had a three million dollar swing in one year. Where we went into this, you know, this budget deliberation, thinking we had an extra few million dollars to spend and learned on the morning of budget. Uh, adoption that that money didn't exist anymore, so preliminary, but you will see there are some improvements in those revenues. I will also remind. I, I just, I don't think enough of it was said, when you look at the city's request, the department head request. At six million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is the request. Of that, one million, seven hundred sixteen thousand dollars is debt service. That's directly related to the voter's decision, the voter's mandate that we build a new high school. So, you know, right off the top of that six million, it's almost two million dollars that you could say is directly related to. Those investments that I'm hearing are critical. To positioning the city to become more attractive for businesses and families, so um, with that said, uh, let's talk a little bit about the revenue. And then where I'd like to um end the evening before we open it up for the public um comment or the public hearing. Is direction, what are we comfortable with, we know that we can't say no mill rate increase, we know that that's not possible this year. Uh, the Budget Subcommittee reached a point where they thought, you know, a one mil increase. At that point, not knowing what revenues would be, um, so we'll talk a little bit about the revenues. And then we can move into wh- where do you wanna go, there is a, there is an agenda item here asking the council to approve the proposed city departments. I, I would even entertain a motion to table that because we can certainly bring the council back to the Board of Finance. The day that the budget adoption happens, if I have clear direction on where you want to land. We will work with the department heads, we will. Make the decision as to where those cuts will happen, and then that board will, you as a board will have the. Option to decide whether or not those are appropriate.
Looking for the motion to table now? Or after the discussion?
No, yeah, let's, let's continue with the review and discussion, and we're gonna discuss the revenue, so this, the revenue page, is that up already on the screen? Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, so we did a, we did a very rough estimate of um changes in revenue, and um, so I'll just highlight the, the changes. Um, under property tax collection, we had a one and a half percent increase, um, and that, that calculation is based on the current mill rate. So that, that increase is one point four million dollars. Um, under the motor vehicle transition grant, that um increase is due to the change in grand list from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. We saw an increase in the twenty twenty-one grand list, but we were not able to um. See a positive impact on that until this year, there, it's a year in arrears, um, so that. Is a one point five million dollar increase. Other small increases under, um, in lieu of taxes, the, the property taxes that um. The revenue we receive in lieu of taxes, so, um, and then under building department revenue, you're gonna see a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar decrease, that is. A um. We budgeted three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars last year to cover the um.
Was the cost of the. High school, middle school, um, building permit fee.
Yes.
A, a, a fraction of the building permit fee, the rest of the fee was waived.
Uh, we're showing a um slight increase in city clerk revenue of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The one hundred thousand dollars under other revenue is for the cannabis revenue that we're going to be receiving, uh, that is just an estimate, uh, we. Only have a month to look back on currently, um. But based on conversations that the mayor has had and what we've been seeing. We're going to put in um one hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and we also have a one hundred thousand dollar expense line. Um, and then the transfer in from debt service to cover the interest payment of, so the transfer in is one point four million. That is a nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar increase from last year. Um, under education. You'll see our excess cost. Um, has gone down six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, that number is. Obviously impacted by uh special ed expenses and. Um, we know that those expenses have gone down significantly, uh, so that is a direct, um, that has a direct impact on our revenue. And so in total, we're showing um. An increase of three point one million dollars in revenue. Um, you'll see that we did decrease the fund balance transfer by a hundred thousand dollars, that's something we have to continue to reduce. You know, it's looked at very closely um from our bond council and. So that's, you know, we need to get to that point where we aren't using a fund balance to balance the budget.
So the only other thing, um, there are a few other line items that we, um, revenue, um, items that we will be looking at, you know, we've. Employed a full-time blatant enforcement officer, that expense is written into this um budget. The work that the blatant enforcement officer has been doing has been incredibly successful. With um a significant number of fines that have been collected, we will be taking a look at what those fines are to see if we can utilize some of those. Revenues to offset the cost of the um blatant enforcement officer. Um, so there'll be an opportunity for us to review that in the form of additional revenues. Uh, we also have been receiving um revenues from the uh state's uh imposition of a NIP. I always call them nippers, nips, nips, so um, you know, there's uh roughly sixty thousand dollars a year that comes in um for those revenues. Uh, this board made the decision that fifty percent of those revenues would be used to offset operating budget expenses. So there are other smaller line items that we need to dive deep into, we have the next two and a half weeks to do that. Interest. Um, that is being um. That is being earned on general fund deposits, needs to be looked at very closely, so these revenues are still very much a moving target. So we, we know that where we stand today, based on these very rough estimates. That there's uh roughly three million dollars of additional revenue over last year's revenue, that can be used to offset some of these expenses. I do want to spend just a little bit of time when we talk about grand list, when we talk about the impact. Of being a distressed municipality, when we talk about the impact of being the metropolitan. Center. Um, of the Torrington area, metropolitan area. Um, the pilot that you heard Robin discuss, that is a state payment in lieu of taxes, pilot. Those are funds that the state pays the city of Torrington for non-taxable properties. And we could certainly do a quick spreadsheet and analysis for you of what. Revenues are lost because of the non-taxable. Properties in the city of Torrington, that state property, you've got the courthouse, you've got the hospital. You have um state property, state parks, uh, John Minnetto, uh. Sunny, sunny, yeah. You have all the small not-for-profits, you know, McCall, Susan B. Anthony, um, The Gathering Place. The arts, you know, organizations. We lose a significant amount of revenue, well in excess of four million dollars. That, you know, that. Our taxpayers on the local level have to shoulder. So it's not just about not growing a grand list, it's for every time a not-for-profit buys a piece of property in the city of Torrington. And takes it off the tax rolls. That burden shifts to the real estate property owners or the small businesses.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
I know this, I, I, I know about the pilot money, okay, and again. Many times I've requested that the council, and you know, through the mayor, have, are, we, the people of Torrington elect state representative, they control those, those determinations, correct? At the state level of where the pilot, of pilot money is or is not gonna be paid, and, and what qualifies, constitutes that, it's a state. There, there's a, there's a lack of. This city council holding our elected officials at the state level to come in here and talk to us and the people of Torrington about why. We are in a sense getting short-changed on pilot programs, on, and clearly to, to your broader point. Other types of compensation for our, our Board of Ed costs, we do not get the full load on, on, you know, per the ECS formula. All these things where, where we are short-changed on these things can to, to be affected through the state. And, you know, I, I've been very frustrated in that, they're, they're just, and I don't seem to get any other cooperation, maybe you, David, but. Thanks to request that they appear of with. With the press. You get state-level politicians and the press in a room to say, why is Torrington actually being short-changed on many of these things? And maybe we get some momentum here, you know, it, it's too late for this, but this is a long process, but, you know, again, this has been discussed, I've made these requests many, many times. You know, yes, pilot is one of them, um, there's so many of them where, where this happens.
I'll join you in that discussion, Mr. Kevin, I.
Was that?
I said, I'll join you in that conversation.
Good, well, through, through, let's get this to happen.
It, to your, to your point, Paul, uh, you, you said, did I hear you right, you, you have requested that our local reps come in and basically address the council, I mean.
Yes, many times, ma- on, on specific issues, yes, on specific issues.
Would it make sense to reach out to our local reps and ask that, you know, I don't know, pick a number, not less than once or twice a year that they come in and say hello?
I think that's a terrific idea, I mean, me personally, yeah.
Yes. And we've, we've done that, and we've had them here, admittedly not frequently enough. I think that always the demand or the urgency, the sense of urgency to have them come before the boards is during the budget cycle. And unfortunately, that's when they are in session, and I know that we've had these problems with scheduling, but I would agree with you, this is a year-long problem, year in, year out. I would also say that, um, when we talk about this, the city of Torrington being short-changed. Those decisions made at the state level apply to the entire state, it's not like somebody isn't fighting hard enough for the city of Torrington. Those decisions, when it comes to ECS and it comes to a pilot. Those impact every municipality and that fight is being fought by, you know, the small towns that are, you know, trying not to be written out of an ECS formula. And the big cities, you know, that are, you know, that have more pressing.
But it's, it's a matter of fact, though, that the pilot money. It was a long and arduous process to get the courthouse to, to Torrington. Right, and up until it became, came to Torrington, the city of Litchfield was getting pilot money, were they not?
Yes, yes, and the city of Torrington does get pilot, we don't get the proportional share that was written into legislation originally. Um, and each budget cycle, you know, it, two years ago, there was a change um to create these tiered. These tiered um payment levels, and the city of Torrington did benefit from that, um, to your point, I did join forces with other municipalities. I'll be honest with you, it's not the western municipalities that, um, that can influence those changes. It's partnering with the mayor of Waterbury, the mayor of Bridgeport, the mayor of New Haven, the mayor of New London. And those meetings happen on a regular basis, I am on the Board of Directors of CCM, that is the advocacy group, that is the. Lobbying group for the state of Connecticut, um, I'm doing what I can to represent the city of Torrington on that, that level. But those, those decisions aren't that somebody isn't fighting hard enough for Torrington, it's just that. All of the legislators that represent all one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities are fighting for their. You know, their foothold on what benefits them best. But I, I would agree with you, a, a meeting with all of our representatives, um, the two state senators and the two um representatives. Is overdue and I will.
In my eight years, to your point, to your point specifically, in my eight years on the city council, and I know whatever, um, I have yet to see. Our elected officials in Hartford come before our city council and specifically talk about what can we do at the state. To make this a more business-friendly environment in northwest Connecticut, which goes to, again, energy, goes to, it goes to transportation, it goes to a, a lot of, a lot of things. No, and I would love to have them in front of us to discuss that.
Yes.
I think it's even to Paul's point, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, just to get them to understand really the, the, what a revenue problem we do have, right? Because while, right, while one person, it may not be that they're not fighting hard enough because they are, I'm sure, keep you Torrington in mind and calling you when. There's legislation that pops up, but really having them understand the revenue problem and having them understand what all of these unfunded mandates to you. I don't have to tell Fiona, um, how many unfunded mandates, um, education gets, it's probably every mandate that comes down, how many get funded, Fiona? One out of ten, um, so, you know, it, it's a problem both on the city side, but it's a problem on the Board of Education side, it's a problem all over. Um, so, you know, the, to Paul's point, I think it would be good for them to understand what type of issues we're up against. Whether it does anything or not, I guess we'll find out, but um, at, at least if they know the hard numbers on, on what we're pressed against, it may be. May be good for them to know that, and, and to know that every single mandate that gets passed and clumped in these five hundred-page bills. Um, aren't funded, and again, it's on the backs of the taxpayers to. Absorb those costs and it's, that, I mean, the four years that I've been on the Board of Finance, I've been saying the same thing. When, when will it end, enough is enough, but unfortunately, you know, as long as government keeps doing what government does, then it's. Just keeps trickling down, yeah, kicking the can, so.
But it, it's hard when you're talking about the mayor working with, with other towns, cities in town, she's right that it has to be outside of our area because. It looks to our neighboring border towns like, um, we're looking to give horse in the mouth, you know, Torrington. Got the money for the school and the extra money for the school at eighty-five percent, um, Torrington gets. Even, even the, the pilot money that we do get is more than, than, than the other towns. Yeah, because they don't have, they're not the city, we're, we're the, the metropolitan, the. All, all of that, but we also are the social service hub. And that. That, at least the pilot money is, is related to state, state property, but the, the not-for-profits. There isn't any for anybody, and that, that's not something that is supplemental. Bunch of money comes to any communities. And when you've got as many churches as we do, and you've got as many social service agencies as we do, we have all those things that, that. Serve everybody in, in our surrounding communities, but, but they don't pay.
I, I would just love metrics that, that identified. When businesses, for-profit businesses, okay, I don't want to get into the discussion of the Penroses, but the for-profit, specifically for-profit. Is whether it's a company with fifteen people or a hundred and fifty people, you, with well-paying jobs, and that would grow the grand list. When they come and interview and look at Torrington because of our affordable housing, uh, and the beauty of the city and so many other things, right? Why do we, they not come here, do we have, do, do we, do we have two or three outstanding things we can point to?
Taxes. Taxes overwhelmingly, we're at a forty-seven point one four mill rate. If we, when we pass this budget and we go to forty-eight, and next year will be worse because the debt service. Will increase again and the bond premiums will not be there to offset those expenses, the mill rate will go up again. And it is, it's, it's taxes, it's far easier for a. It's far easier for a business to choose to move to Winston where they pay half the mill rate. You know, when we talk about what do we do to attract those businesses, so perfect example, success story. Because I think that this is an opportunity for us also to recognize what are the successes. You have here, it was handed out to you a little bit earlier and I think it was sent to the board members, uh, back in February, if not early March. You have the, um, city assessors, um, breakdown or, uh, press release on grand list growth. Keystone place at Newbury Brook, you will recall, Mr. Kevin Earl, that that was a, um, developer that was going to build somewhere else. And we said, let's give them a tax abatement, let's work with them to keep them in the city of Torrington. We gave them a seven-year tax abatement. They are now, one, two, three, four, five, our fifth highest taxpayer in the city of Torrington. So those tax abatements, those tax incentives do work.
Sure, that's a great thing, at fifteen, twenty-five, what, what was Waterways asking, twenty-five years?
There's, we haven't reached a, they haven't asked for a number of years on that one.
I believe when they appeared in front of us, Mayor, they were asking for something like a twenty-year tax abatement.
Uh, no decision was made, this board was not asked.
No decision was made, but I believe that was requested.
The request was, would there be a tax incentive? That was the request and the answer was, yes, there would be a tax incentive, but that tax incentive hasn't been calculated yet. So, so when we talk about the challenge of attracting a developer to the city of Torrington, taxes are the biggest hurdle. Our location, we don't have an interstate highway, we don't have an airport, we don't have a seaport. We, we don't even have freight delivery here, we've got freight that only comes to, you know, halfway up the, uh, the rail line, the rest of the rail line's been abandoned. So transportation, uh, you know, the, the multimodal transportation opportunities don't exist in the Northwest corner. So we are a very challenging, um, municipality to become attractive to those developers. Um, and I would credit the council all day long for the decisions that have been made. That make it easier for those developers to consider the city of Torrington and they are. You know, they're not happening three, four and five at a time like Waterbury or New Haven or Bridgeport are getting. But if we get one or two every couple of years, that's a win. And maybe you don't see that tax in year one or two. But every year you see that tax being implemented and it is coming back to the taxpayers of the city of Torrington. They never lose money on those decisions, nobody ever loses money because it isn't an abatement of taxes. It's just a delay of the increase in the tax.
Oh, I get that and, and I, this is not the proper meeting to discuss this, but I would like to know, adding, now that we have some. Clarification on what's happening, for instance, with Penrose, what are, you know, what are increases to education costs there? And, uh, again, that's not going to move the needle in any way, shape or form here, so.
I was anticipating that question, I do have a report for the council that I can share.
At some point in the future, I mean, that's not going to affect this decision, but, okay.
Was much lower than what everybody feared.
Okay, well, that's good, that's very good, that's very, but it gets to what you're saying, so, so, never mind, we, we can move on. There, there, there's ways of attracting business to Northwest Connecticut, which we do, by the way, have Route Eight feeding eighty-four. Uh, and there would have to be upgrades to that, but we also have people at the state who, if they really were desirous. Of bringing manufacturing back to the Western region of Connecticut, could probably do a lot at the state level. To, you know, enhance that, that main artery up and down the West Coast of Connecticut. But that's not on you, that's not on this people, those are people in Hartford that need to do that. And it would behoove us to get a bunsen burner and put a little fire where it needs to go, to, uh, make some of that happen, I suppose. I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, it's well said, actually. Oh, uh, Board of Finance member Christopher Anderson, you have a question or comment?
It's asleep.
Sorry, just have to figure out how to lower my hand. He was getting digitally tired, um, no, I, 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 not to rewind too far, but I, I was hoping to chime in earlier. And just thank you for, for sitting with the, you know, the, the CCM and working with those other big municipalities, because you're right. Torrington is substantially similar to many other municipalities in that way. And sometimes you have to choose the right allies when going to Hartford. And not to rewind or restart an earlier conversation, but would you be willing to send a very public letter? To all of our elected representatives in Hartford and very deliberately and directly invite them? To come and give us an update, not less than once a year? Because to Paul's points, um, I mean, I'm coming around to at least ten years' service on the various boards. And I don't remember the last time one of them volunteered to come in and talk to us. I don't think it's your responsibility to ask or invite them, I think they should be more proactive about that, but I would love an update from Hartford.
And I think to that point, you know, while, while we say we're not anything compared to the New Havens and, and, and the Waterberrys and the Harfords. Um, but we are heavily represented, I mean, at one point, we had three state representatives and two state senators. There are very few districts which even have two state representatives and two state senators. So while we may be a small fish in the pond, uh, we're heavily represented in Hartford, one of them being a Deputy Speaker of the House. So, you know, I, I don't think we're as small fishes as we think sometimes, but, you know, like I said, I do understand that we don't pull the weight that. Those larger cities do, that's for sure.
That's our humility showing, but it would be nice if one of them asked if to, they could stop by.
We will certainly.
Yeah. Um, and I think anybody that agrees with that would, should be willing to sign their name on that letter.
Hundred percent, yes.
Thank you, mister.
Well, we can make it, uh, we can make a request from the city council.
Yeah, yeah, come from the council, we can do that.
All right, we can pull that letter together, we can have the council, um, review it. And, um, it can be signed and sent. And I, I know, I know for a fact those representatives and senators would be more than happy to attend these meetings. And talk about the challenges that they face in the state as well. So revenue, you see where we, we, we'll see an uptick in revenue, um, to offset some of the requests and the increase in spending. But there is certainly still a very big delta, um, so. If there are no other questions relative to the review of the city budgets and the revenue, then what I.
It's a math question, so the one point seven million that we have for debt that the voters voted for and know was going to lead their taxes to go up, what is that in mills? So, I mean. I actually wasn't there when we finally decided on the one mil increase from the Budget Committee. I mean, I'm comfortable with one over what people have already voted for, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what you guys were all thinking about, but, I mean, I, I think. It's not, nobody's comfortable with it, nobody really wants to pay anymore, but, I mean, I think it's not really fair to ask our, all of our departments to run. Like with no increases because of money that the voters have already voted to spend on, on what's for us a very affordable project. We do have some clout in Hartford because we have a pretty amazing school coming in for like, not very much money for us, but, um. That said, I, I just want to make sure that we're not talking about one mil and, I mean, that would be eaten up completely by the debt and nothing else, so I don't know. What you guys were all thinking, but.
Mr. Bayes, didn't you ask the Board of Ed to come back with at least an example of what a no increase would look like?
I believe that was one of the requests that came from the Board of Finance in the joint meeting, yes.
I have not heard back on that request.
Well, actually, I think there is an email, yeah, there was an email from the superintendent informing the board that, um. The Board of Education did meet and discuss that and said that they felt there were no cuts that they could offer.
Oh, yes.
But with that said, um, and I want to get to the, um, to the point that Councilwoman Hone was making. But I think first part of that has to be, um, is the council prepared to move on item ten? Or do you wish to table?
Oh, table.
Do I, so I have a motion to table, do I have a second? Alright, so I have a motion and a second, questions, or I, I guess when I have it's a motion to table, I'm supposed to just call it, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we will table this with the understanding that what we will do is we will bring back prior to the Board of. Finances deliberation, um, on budget adoption, a list of where the cuts would happen. Um, so that's where I'm getting some direction from Councilwoman Hone is saying a one mil increase. Um, which, and I think it's justifiable to say that's, you know, akin to where the debt service increase was. Is comfortable, is that?
Yeah, well, I was gonna sort of piggyback on that, I agree, um, I was going to use a, instead of one mil. Two million above debt, uh, above debt service as sort of the goal, get you pretty close to there, that was something that I was thinking about. But, uh, but yeah, I just, I think it would be irresponsible of us as a team, as a representative board. To go forward with the budget as opposed. Not that anyone, again, everyone is showing us what they need, not that what they want, we all understand that. But again, I also have to kind of echo some of the, you know, what Paul had said about public safety. I really don't want to cut much of that at all. Uh, we owe it to our citizens and our communities to be as safe as possible, that's how you attract. That and a better forum, a higher quality of education, that's what brings people to Torrington, not a shiny new building.
So for the council members, um, on the public safety, and I need, I'll ask for a little clarification. Um, while we are discussing the public safety budgets, which on this, um, spreadsheet shows a four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Nine hundred and ninety-six dollar increase over the prior year's budget, which is two point two eight percent. I will remind this board that this does not reflect wage increases. Because in both the fire department and the police department, we are in contract negotiations and I can tell you that. That is going to be significantly more than what's here.
So that is, um, if you look under the financial portion of this, of the expenses, the payroll. The one million dollar increase is due to the estimate of those contracts, um, being approved.
So it isn't a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase, it's closer to a one point four million dollar increase.
Yeah, so that's where.
The money is there. It's budgeted, just not in those departments.
Understood.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you for the clarification.
So clarification, I heard one mil, um. I hear two million, just so everybody knows, one, uh, mil is equivalent to about one point nine nine.
I think he said two million above. Above debt service.
Because he's taking the one.
Three point seven million.
Correct.
Three point seven million is a two mil increase.
Yes, understood.
So we would be from forty-seven to forty-nine in our mill rate.
That's without the increase of the revenues.
Right.
Right.
So what I will do is I will work, don't, um, I'm assuming those are motions and seconds. First I should ask for this to be, yeah. I should ask, is the council prepared to add, um, to the agenda? A motion to direct me on, uh, where we should be going with the budget?
No.
Not adding it? Oh, I can't add it?
Yeah.
Part of the discussion, okay, alright. So the motion is two million above debt service, three point seven million dollars we're looking at. Okay.
I mean, that's, I'll, I'll say that, yes.
We're, can, we can comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely, still discussion, yeah.
Perhaps, like, several scenarios, a one, a one and a half, and a two.
Sure. You're talking mil, right? Miss Feshi, you're talking mil, one, one and a half, two.
Yes, yeah, non-million.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, that's fine.
Which translates back into.
Whatever you want to show us, it's fun.
Practically, that's the best way to do it, yes.
Yeah, right, it's just hard.
And I'm just going to remind those boards, these, these two boards is, we know that this is the impact of where we land this year. We know next year the debt service increases again and we will not have the one point four million dollars of funds.
Right.
So we will be over fifty, we will be over fifty in our mill rate. And that's why I always worry where we go in a year we can control it versus the year we cannot control it.
Right, so that's why we're trying to be as cautious as possible this year.
The discussion, right, one and a half, which is one.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're looking at one instead of two.
Subject that he came back with the one. So with that said, um, I'm, I'm hearing the direction is, you want to see this in three and three tiers? What does it look like at one mil, what does it look like at one and a half?
Sure.
What does it look like at two?
I think then whatever I move, move.
So I'm just gonna, just, I'm looking for consensus, surely, show of hands, in favor?
Yep, yes, sure. Okay, I mean, like I said, I think. I think getting close to two is dangerous territory, um, just because of the increased debt service running onto the books next year. And we, we have to keep that in mind, if, if revenues, um, continue to stay flat or God forbid decrease from now to next year. I mean, we're putting ourselves, we talk about taking holes, um, you know, it, that's, that's going to be a giant slap. So, um, it's, it's, it's dangerous getting near that, so I, you know, I understand looking at it, but I don't. I don't, I don't see how two is practical this year. So while I, while I can respect seeing those, um, steps, um, you know, I just don't think two is.
But, and ultimately, I mean, that, that would be the board, that would be the city council's decision and what, where they want to land with their city budget.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it is this board, the Board of Finance, that wishes to, um, that would have to make that final decision. And Christopher Anderson has a question still. Mr. Anderson? Have you mastered that hand yet?
Yes, but it takes.
Because they're still the board of ed, but, so when we're talking about one, one and a half, two, that's only on the city side.
It's only, right, I'm forty-five percent of that.
Right, what, what I was gonna ask, Mayor, if, if you wouldn't mind, it might be too soon for this.
Can't hear you, Chris.
How about now, is that better?
Can you put it in the chat? And I do want to, uh, uh, we have members of the public that have been very patient here and they do want to allow them an opportunity to speak. I know, it's gotta be a long comment. Did I, did I call the vote, there was a motion to, um, first of all, did I call a motion on the table? In case I didn't call a motion table, could I, could I just pose that in case, all in favor of tabling? Yeah, I think I did, yeah, alright, so I'm duplicating an effort, thank you very much, alright. Ten has been tabled, yeah, so. So when the big sheet is available, could we show the, uh. Relative mill impact in the city board event and debt service separately, please, yes, we can, yes. Alright, so ten has been tabled, um, really, there's, because it's a special meeting, no other, this is for the board. So I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting so I can open the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bayes, um, second, Mr. Oliver, thank you, um, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, let's move into the public hearing, um, and the reason some of the public is here this evening. So for the record, it is now seven fifty-nine PM, still Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, City Hall Auditorium. Both the Board of Finance and Board of, uh, the City Council members, as previously identified, are present and attending. Um, before we go into the public comment, could we please have the notice read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen and the Board of Finance of the city of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, May twenty-second. Twenty twenty-three, immediately following a special joint meeting that starts at six thirty PM in the City Hall Auditorium, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. twenty twenty-three, immediately following a special joint meeting that starts at six thirty PM in the City Hall Auditorium, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit citizen input regarding the proposed city budget for the fiscal period from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All interested parties are invited to attend and be heard in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to present their comments. Comments may be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office by email to city underscore clerk at torringtonct.org, or by mail to one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Copies of the proposed budget will be available at the offices of the city comptroller and city clerk prior to the hearing dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the sixteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three. Carol Anderson, city clerk. And if I may, Mayor, um, this one is a little different than usual. It doesn't say that the people on Zoom must submit in writing, so if anyone raises their hand.
Okay, alright, so in the interest of um allowing anybody who read that notice and made assumptions, I think we'll want to give that consideration. Alright, so we are open to the public for members of the public that wish to address the board. Um, and if, I could just ask you to come up to the microphone and just state your name for the record, please.
I think you all have comfy chairs. That's, that's nice. Um, my name's John Busa. I've moved here well over thirty years ago. My wife and I picked Torrington as a place to raise our children, and uh and we did, and we're glad. But, that being said, um, a couple of things that, you talked about industry and businesses, but my children have grown and uh most of them have, almost all of them, have uh chose to buy property outside of Torrington. Uh, not only they have, but I'm thinking about well over a half dozen of their friends who are married and growing up and have chose to buy outside of Torrington. Um, so we're not attracting the young people. They're not moving because of their jobs are bringing them away. They're moving because of the taxes. And uh when I first moved here, they were not so bad. Now they're more than my mortgage payment every month, and you're talking about you're raising them again. I understand you got guidelines and mandates and other things, but you're gonna force us out. Um, I don't want to leave this town, but my children are telling me I should because of the taxes, but I like it here. I, I like you. I like everybody here. Everybody's hardworking. We're a good working town. But uh, you gotta understand, it's not gonna, you, you gotta figure something out. I mean, we're running school systems with the same system as we did when I was in the fifties, in school. You know, I mean, think about it. It's, everybody's businesses have changed. I used to be a business go, so every business changes, but it seems like that business stays the same. Your hierarchy stays the same. Everything stays the same. It just gets bigger. Um, you know, just get creative. I don't know what you're gonna do, but get creative. I just appeal to you. Think about our retirees that have got to hang in here. Um, it's not easy for us. And, and like he says, groceries, everything, gone up. So help us out. Thank you.
Mr. Busa. So, public, please.
My name's Eileen Masalo. I live on one fourteen John Brown Road for the last year. We had a new house built out there, Charlie, my husband and I, and I don't, I can't tell you how many people laughed at us because we bought property in Torrington. And if we only moved a mile and a half away, we would have been in Goshen and saved like half, half of the taxes. So taxes are definitely a big reason. Don't understand why Torrington is in this position. I know they had manufacturing and then they lost it, but what really all the expenses are, and we really need to renew, we're just starting to kind of get involved to see what is in Torrington. I will tell you that we did live in town on Prospect Street in a little apartment for a few months while we were waiting for the house to get finished. And we fell in love with the town. I mean, the town is just absolutely great and fantastic, and we do love it. But I do think that you are going to have to do some of the taxes. We belong to the churches here in town. And I see the number of people that go into these churches. These are not people that can afford any increases in their taxes. They can't even afford the one mil, let alone two mil or more. It really is, it, it's very sad. So I do know, uh, I was in business, and I do know sometimes you have to make some very, very hard choices when you're looking at budgets. I know how budgets work. I know how every department goes in, because you know you're gonna get cut. So you go in, and they're all good things. It's not that they're not things, like you say, wants versus needs. But if you ask people, if you had to do it for this, what would you do? I did have a couple of questions. What's Department Forty-four? Is that public safety?
No, that is um payroll and benefits.
For all towns.
It is, um.
So each, yeah, each department in the um city, whether it's the building department or the city clerk's department, they each have a number. Um, is, the budget is online? Is it then posted on the website?
Yes.
So um, the budget book looks like this. And um Department Forty-four would be written up in the corner here.
Okay, I, I found the school budget, but I couldn't find the town budget.
The city's budget, okay, alright.
It's on your website?
Is it in the agenda from last meeting?
Yeah, okay.
So there's on the website, if, um, yeah, if we could put it under spotlight, I think that would be a good spot for it. So right on the uh
uh, front page, there's a little area called Spotlight in the lower left.
Okay.
Uh, it will post it there, so you can dive into it.
Great. And then just one last quick question. What would be the impact to the lawsuit at the Yankee Pedler thing in June? Would, would have on a budget? Would, are there budget implications to that if we win or lose, whatever? No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright, public comment, we're still open. Please.
Me, um, me and my wife moved here about five, six years ago. Same thing. We were looking at places and everybody said, don't. But we like Torrington. And I won't go over, everybody's knows that the, the mill rate's obviously too high. It is a distraction. You know, I work with a lot of businesses. I'm a purchaser for a big company in Winstead. And everyone that comes in doesn't just say like, well, maybe I, I thought about Torrington. They say you gotta be crazy to go to Torrington to do business. And I mean, every single one, it's like the first thing that they talk about. So what, is there a committee, or is there a, how do we try to attract business? I mean, what is the, do we actually have a?
So I would welcome you, because this is the public hearing about the budget, I welcome you to um contact my office.
Okay.
Um, and I can connect you with our Economic Development Commission, or some of these other commissions. There are.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Still open to the public for public comment? Yeah, please. Um, duly noted, uh, and I do know that the Board of Finance has received those communications. Um, and I appreciate your input. Okay, let's see. Can he read the chat himself, too?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, anybody else, either participating via Zoom or in the auditorium, and because it's a public hearing, I do have to say this um at least two times. And then before I close the um hearing, I will close it with three notices. So, um, second call from the public. Any comments with regard to the city's um budget proposal? Third call. Anybody from the public wishing to address the boards regarding the city's budget proposal? Right, saying no other comments. Um, I will declare this public hearing closed. I will declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. Um, and that ends the lineup for this evening. Thank you all very much for coming out. We do appreciate when people come out and share their thoughts.